Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, June 2nd, 2025, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. Before we call, move forward, would you please silence your cell phones? And with that, please join the Commission in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Jorgensen.
President.
Commissioner Sundell. Here. Commissioner Dardis.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here. Let the record show, all Commissioners are present. The next order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda. It had been distributed and in your packets.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Sundell moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the Order of the Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order is the approval of the minutes of May 19th, 2025.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 19th, 2025, as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F is the building permits. Again, it has been distributed and is in your packets.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Anderson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sundell, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the building permits as presented. Is there any discussion?
I need to recuse myself.
Commissioner Jorgensen is recusing himself on this item. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Let the record show, four were in favor, one recused themselves on the building permit applications. Next order of business is a consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have items A through H have been distributed and in your packet.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items A through H, as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We now are on the regular agenda. Madam Secretary, has anyone signed up for public comment?
I do not have anyone.
All right. Thank you. We are now out of item number one of the regular agenda, and we move into item number two. Item number two is the public hearings, and we have two this evening. The will begin with 824-28, an ordinance amendment to Title IV and Title X regarding the establishment of regulations and licensing standards for short-term rentals. We're going to call on Aaron Nelson, the Director of Planning and Zoning. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, President Dardis and Commissioners. So, item two, the first part of item two, anyway, is an ordinance amendment regarding the regulation and licensing of short-term rentals of residential dwellings. This item was most recently presented at the March 5th City Commission Meeting, at which the City Commission directed staff to bring forward a revised version of the ordinance for consideration of approval. The requested action tonight is to hold a public hearing and consider the first reading of the revised short-term rental ordinance. So, since this item was presented to the Commission in full last month, I'll try to keep things relatively brief here today, and mainly just highlight the main updates to the ordinance. So, as requested, staff has worked with the city attorney to specify that short-term rentals shall be accessory to the residential use of a dwelling unit, specifically that the short-term, or the licensed premises must be primarily, must be a primary residence in which someone lives for more than half of the year. So, that was the main change that we've made to the ordinance since last month. The main intent of this provision is to maintain the residential nature of these properties and the neighborhoods in which they are located, while also allowing the opportunity for short-term rentals as an accessory use of the residential dwelling. The revised ordinance includes transitional provisions for existing short-term rental operators, allowing pre-existing short-term rentals in exemption to the primary residency requirement for a period of 16 months, in order to allow an opportunity for those folks to get their affairs in order, if need be, in order to meet that primary residency requirement. In addition to the revisions discussed at the May 5th City Commission Meeting, excuse me, March, yeah, May 5th, sorry, I think I said March earlier, May 5th City Commission Meeting, staff has worked with the city attorney to ensure that the ordinance does not infringe on interstate commerce, which was a legal concern raised within some of the previous public comment. Since the May 5th meeting, staff has received no additional comments regarding the ordinance. So, with that brief update, I'd be happy to elaborate on any of the revised ordinance provisions, or any of the information provided in the packet, or anything covered last month. Otherwise, again, the requested action tonight is to hold a public hearing and consider first reading of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question. During the discussion on planning and zoning, there are some existing in the community. Have those been addressed of being grandfathered in, or anything like that?
Yep. So, the revised ordinance does include a transitional provisions section, and so anybody that has been operating a short-term rental, or, excuse me, a short-term rental within the community, prior to the, assuming this gets adopted, or prior to the adoption date, they would be allowed to apply for a transitional license. They need to meet all of the standard requirements of the short-term rental with the exclusion of the primary residency requirement. That would be, they'd essentially be grandfathered for a period of about 16 months. That grandfathering provision would sunset the end of 2026.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Olson.
On that note, we have variant, varying ordinances that allow, like, non-conforming structures built within the control setback that we've allowed to stay in place. We haven't required them to tear down their structure or anything. We have residences that are grandfathered in, such as Nelson Acres, to have certain livestock on there. We haven't told them that they have to get rid of their livestock after a certain date. So, I feel this is very burdensome on the people who are currently operating an Airbnb like this, that we're going to force them to sell their property if it's not a primary residence.
Any additional comments for Mr. Nelson?
I've got a whole host of questions. You want me to wait till after the public hearing?
Uh, no, let's do them now.
Okay.
Please.
Primary residence verification. How are we going to monitor that? What kind of requirements are we going to require of these applicants that they're there at least 183 days out of the year?
Yep.
I don't see that anywhere in the ordinance of how we're going to verify that.
Yep. That's a good question. So, as part of the application procedure, one of the requirements for an application would be that the person applying for the license, whether it be the owner or operator, they would be required to sign a statement, basically swearing or promising that they are, that the residence is a primary residence, that somebody is living there for more than one half of the year. So...
In the application that's drafted, there's one little tiny line in the very last part that says that this is their primary residence. It does, nowhere does it explain what a primary residence is and what their requirements are. So, that would, if this is adopted, that would need to be changed.
Excuse me, Commissioner Olson.
Yep.
Would that be continuous residence?
It does not need to be continuous, as long as somebody is living there, you know, six months plus one day out of the 360-day year.
So, if they live their Monday through Thursday, move out for the weekends?
Presumably, yeah, somebody could do that. The other thing I would note is that the, yeah, the application included in the staff report, that is just an example application. So, if this ordinance were to be adopted, the effective date we penciled in, or we've included in the ordinance to be September 1st, and so that would give staff a few months' time in order to make sure we're kind of thinking through everything that we want to include in the application. And so, I think, you know, some of the points that Commissioner Olson is raising are good points that we'll want to think through a little bit more detail before we actually draft the final application form.
Okay. Then on...
Commissioner Olson, continue.
On the occupancy, the ordinance doesn't place a limit other than what the number of bedrooms are for family-related people. So, if you had a house that could be, that could have eight people, you could have a mother, father, and six kids be there, but if it was five college buddies, or if it was only college people and not related, or anybody not related, you can only have five.
Correct.
Why are we going to limit that? Because the fire code could say eight, and now we're going to say only five because you're not related. To me, that's not right. Under definitions in Section 101602, it says what a tenant is, and to me, that's confusing because the way the definition is, the tenant described there is the actual owner of the residence. So, to me, the tenant should be changed to owner, in my mind, unless I don't know what a tenant versus owner is.
Legal counsel, Katie Smith.
Yeah. No, it's actually intended to be two different. So, the intent of it is to allow the owner, the operator, if it's some other than the owner, or a long-term tenant, can also apply for the license to do short-term rentals during their long-term period. So, it's intended that the owner and the tenant may not be the same person.
That was my next question. What is an operator? Because if it's a primary residence...
Yep. Yep. It's intended to be, so if I'm, if I'm an out-of-state owner and I hire a management company to come in and operate, then they could be the operator that could apply for it, so long as there's like a longer-term tenant that's there for at least six months. So, the operator doesn't have to be the tenant or the primary resident, but someone else has to be.
So, if I own a property, and I live in another state, but I rent it out to somebody else, and they stayed there at least 183 days a year, that operator could sublease it, basically, to somebody else under the short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are we going to offer any refunds on the license if they stop being a short-term rental? They have it for six months, they paid their $150, will we owe them a refund? We don't talk about that. We talk about prorating. Like, if I start up one in the middle of the year, then we would prorate the license fee, but what about, do they just eat that, or what? Those are, you know, some things that I question, you know, just couldn't see. So, those are my questions.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on 824-28, ordinance amendment to Title IV and Title X regarding the establishment of regulations? Commissioner Jorgensen.
I'm just against the occupancy deal as far as the five related or unrelated people. If three couples want to show up and bring their kids for a hockey game or whatever, Chief Nielsen's guys show up, and, you know, there is a loud party, are they going to kick the one family out? Write them a ticket, and you have your day in court, so nothing happens. They just go back and plead their case in court. So, I think that needs, I mean, like I said before, I've traveled with numerous couples, and that's why we get them. So, I think that needs to be adjusted, you know, to, you know, when you sell a two-bedroom house, or a three-bedroom house, or a four-bedroom house, the occupancy load changes, whether it's related or not.
Commissioner Sundell.
I think what I'm hearing from my fellow Commissioners is a common issue seems to be the concept of the occupancy rating. Is it something that, if directed, we could maybe also vote on directing staff time into looking to changing occupancy to be different, and then we could update both zone sections to be, whether it's fire rating or whatever we want to do? I know you picked five because it would keep it consistent with our other zoning. Is that an option?
Yeah, that would be, and just to maybe elaborate what you just mentioned there, from staff's perspective, the intent of including the occupancy, the way that that's defined in the short-term rental ordinance, it was intended to match exactly how the occupancy is defined within the city's zoning regulations. And so, you know, you wouldn't be allowed to have more, you know, residents occupying a dwelling just because it's a short-term rental versus somebody staying there long-term. Just a little context there. And then, to answer your question, I think, yes, certainly, you know, we could do anything differently. It doesn't have to be that way. That's just where staff landed with the draft, for consistency's sake.
It makes sense to me that it mimics our existing code, and then, I would say, if we're interested in doing something like that, maybe we can have a separate conversation about both sections.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm just saying that, you know, is the rental property, because VRBO would be the rental property, they're not going to ask the question, are you all related, or how many are not related? They always ask, how many people, how many bedrooms? It's pretty basic.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional comments? I have a very simple comment about this. This is a commercial venture in a residential neighborhood, and for that reason, I don't support it. It's a commercial venture in a residential neighborhood, and those neighbors should not have to deal with loud-party issues, parking issues, and those types of things. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I understand your comment, Mayor, and, so if we're not allowing commercial, are we getting rid of the daycares and throwing motor repair guy and a tax person?
They're treated separately in the codes. We have never had a loud-party noise coming from a daycare or anything like that, so I think that, you know, to, to, to place them in the same categories is, is searching. All right. Please. Commissioner Olson.
Chief Nielsen, roughly, how many times have you been called out in the last couple of years due to loud parties at a short-term rental?
We have been called, I don't know the exact number, but we do get called to those frequently, and I think the reason for this ordinance is due to the lack of participation from the homeowners when the police show up, because the neighbors are calling, where there's just no compliance.
Commissioner Olson.
A follow-up to that. So, by requiring the dwelling to be under primary residency of the owner, what do the Commissioners that support this think is going to change because it's a primary residence? When, when they're not there, when it's rented out, they're not there at all. They're in, they're in Arizona, they're in a lake, or what? Just because the ownership is, because of their primary residence, what makes you think that the people who rent it are going to not have loud parties? That, that's my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Sundell.
I would say, it's my opinion that the types of rentals that you accept, because you get to choose to accept every single rental on Airbnb or VRBO, are probably going to be drastically different if you own the home and you live in the home for six months out of the year. So, every time we travel and we stay in an Airbnb, there are sections where, what brings you here? Tell me about yourself. Why are you coming to the town? What are, you know, what are you planning to do when it comes to that? I also think if you live there for 183 days, you probably have a slightly more vested interest in your relationships with your neighbors and the neighboring properties, and if there are problems, maybe there's a direct contact where the neighbors could even, in fact, message their neighbor and say, hey, we have a loud-party situation going on, and hopefully, compliance-wise, if there is someone called, the homeowner's going to be a little more compliant, because in theory, we probably all respect our neighbors a little bit more than a commercial entity owning something in a different, in a different section. So, I also think from a compliance standard of taking care of the exterior of the property, making sure it's mowed, making sure it's shoveled, making sure all of those things that we also have in our code compliance, I would venture to guess you are going to be more likely to upkeep if it is your primary revenant, you know, residence that you're vested in, as opposed to something that's an investment property that you're probably more likely to skimp in different, different areas.
I disagree with that because it's your business. You're going to keep it up.
The cool thing is, we can agree to disagree up here.
Yep.
And vote.
Are there any other comments?
I guess I have one. Chief Nielsen, so when, when your officers goes there, and do they find said renters and said owner, or just the said people attending or renting that house that night?
Commissioner Jorgensen, that's a good question. What happens typically is, from my, our experiences, those that are renting some of the properties without some of these rules in place, they just don't come to the door. So, when they don't come to the door, they feel like the problem's going to go away. The police department leaves, and then continuing to be a burden on the neighbors, so there's no real teeth in this to, you know, have something in effect for the actual owner of the, the house.
So, I guess with one other thing said, too, what if they don't buy a license? What do we have for recourse on those homeowners?
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, so the question was, what if they don't get a license? What's the recourse? Yeah. So, if, under the ordinance, if it were adopted as is, there's provisions in there that if somebody is found to be operating a short-term rental without a license, they would be giving, given a 30-day grace period in order to apply for a license, after which they would be subject to all of the enforcement provisions outlined in the ordinance, you know, including the fines and penalties.
Any other comments, Commissioners? With that, we're going to go out of the regular meeting. We're going now in a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this issue from the public? Please step to the microphone.
What I'm hearing here, you know...
State your name and address, please, Tom.
Tom Seymour. I live at 1566 Woodridge Lane in West Fargo, and I feel this homeownership idea is a great idea, because I do maintenance on my house regularly, and I'm concerned, even when a contractor comes over, is my carpet going to be ruined or whatever? So, I, I think this idea is a good one to put in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the issue of 824-28, an ordinance amendment to Title IV and Title X regarding the establishment of regulations and licensing standards for short-term rentals? All right. With that, the public hearing is closed. We are back in the regular agenda. Commissioners, this is an actionable item.
I move we approve.
Commissioner Sundell moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve 824-28, the ordinance amendment to Title IV and Title X regarding the establishment of regulations and licensing standards for short-term rentals. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Olson.
As it's written.
As it's written. Yes, sir.
Nothing for the, the transitional period, any changes there? We're going to force these business, these existing businesses to sell their homes by the end of 2026.
They could also have a long-term renter. We don't have anything saying...
They could, but what if they, they don't?
I'm just saying, we're not forcing them to sell their homes.
You're pretty much...
There are options.
Changing their...
We need to stay on the motion.
Right.
The discussion has to be on the motion.
Yeah.
Not on the verbiage. On the motion. The motion was to approve as written.
Okay. So, that's why I wanted to make sure.
All right. Very good. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes on a three-to-two vote. In continuing with public hearings, we are now on 825-11, the first reading of ordinance amendments to Title IV regarding the building control line of COSR, which is Cass County, I believe, zoning district. Mr. Nelson.
All right. Thank you. So, this item is a proposed zoning amendment that is intended to further restrict development activity within 100 feet of the Cheyenne Riverbank. This amendment comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the requested action tonight is to hold the public hearing and to consider first reading of the ordinance. So, just in terms of some background information on this one, the city's COSR, which is our Cheyenne River Corridor Overlay Zoning District, currently establishes a building control line, which restricts development activity within 100 feet of the riverbank. This zoning district currently contains a provision that allows for approval of a variance to construct buildings as close as 50 feet from the riverbank, if it can be demonstrated by a licensed engineer that soils are sufficiently stable. While relatively rare historically, the city has seen an increase in such requests over the past roughly two years or so, and consequently, the Southeast Cass Water Resource District has formally requested that the city amend its zoning standards in order to limit these variances that allow buildings within 100 feet of the riverbank. Staff shares the concerns of Southeast Cass Water Resource District and is supportive of their request. Their request is in letter form and is included as an attachment to the staff report in your packet there. So, to address this concern, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment seeks to remove the option for deviation to the building control line based solely on soil analysis alone. It also seeks to clarify the type and extent of minor development activity that may be allowable within that 100-foot building control area, since such activities are not currently well-defined in the current ordinance. So, by removing the option for deviation that is currently included within the CO-SR standards, any request for deviation would have to follow the standard variance process as outlined in Section 4-566 of the city ordinances, which applies to all zoning standards. So, in essence, any request to deviate from that 100-foot setback essentially from the riverbank, we would treat like, treat that the same as we would any, any other request for variance to any other setback or dimensional standard of the zoning ordinance. And this Section 4-566 outlines specific criteria of approval, which are pretty stringent. Those criteria require such things as demonstration of a unique circumstance that's unique to the property, as well as a hardship that would result from adherence to the city's standard. Staff did receive one comment regarding an earlier draft of the ordinance. This comment was from Southeast Cass Water Resource District regarding concern for potentially allowing flexibility for parking lots within 100 feet of the riverbank. However, this comment was resolved with an edit to the ordinance made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Overall, staff finds the proposed amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which seeks to increase community resiliency, is one of the eight primary goals of that plan, and reduce vulnerability to natural disasters. The requested action tonight, again, is to hold a public hearing, consider approval of the first reading of the ordinance, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff and provide additional details.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, any questions? Commissioner Sundell.
So, in theory, would this kind of end the request for things like in-ground pools that are within the 100, because, I mean, that's not really a hardship, I guess I would say.
Yeah.
Does this kind of take that away?
So, the main difference, the main thing, so today, under the current ordinance, is the way that the city has handled these requests in, in practice is to, you know, require the soils analysis by a qualified licensed engineer. If the soils analysis come back, comes back with a favorable recommendation that it's sufficiently stable, and there's no other concerns, we've generally, staff has generally recommended those for approval. We have not historically followed the standard variance criteria, which requires a showing of some type of a unique hardship, and so that's really the main difference here, is that instead of just following a soil analysis, we would be, we would still be following a soils analysis for any requests next to the river, but in addition to that, we would be following the strict hardship criteria of the standard variance process as well. And so, it, it kind of adds an additional layer of scrutiny to these requests. And so, people still are able to make that request, it's just a higher bar to get over in order to get a recommendation from staff, I guess, for approval.
Commissioner Sundell for a follow-up question.
Can you expand a little bit on hardship criteria? What does that typically consist of?
Yep. So, the hardship criteria, let's see, they are listed right here in the actual ordinance draft, Section 4-566 here. These four criteria, A, B, C, and D, are the specifics. And so, typically, this is things like, you know, you have to show why your property is different from any other property in the city. You know, a, a traditional example is, you know, you've got a residential lot that's on, maybe has this very steep slope or something in a neighborhood that nobody else is really dealing with, and as a result, you have to move the building over a few feet, and you don't quite meet the setback, but it's really the only way to make it, you know, feasibly work. That's an example of kind of a unique situation, if that helps.
Thank you.
Anything additional for Mr. Nelson? Anyone? All right. At this ti, on time, we will close the regular agenda again. We will go into a public hearing. We are in public hearing for 825-11, for the first reading of an ordinance amendment to Title IV regarding the building control line of the COSR zoning district. Is there anyone for the public that would like to speak to 825-11? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to A 25-11? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to A 25-11? An ordinance amendment to Title IV. Good evening and welcome.
Dave Withy, 2421 McLeod Drive East. Since you seem to be looking for a comment, um, I'll just share that I've often wondered about this. Um, as many exceptions have been requested in the two years I've been coming to meetings, and I've always thought, why do we bother having a rule if there's always exceptions being given to it? So personally, I'd like to have a little bit more teeth in the rules.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. We're back into the regular agenda. Again, commissioners, we're on A 25-11, the first reading in ordinance amendment to Title IV regarding the building control line.
Move to approve first reading.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance amendment to Title IV regarding the building control line. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Item number three. Item number three is the expenditure of asset forfeiture money, and we're going to call on the Chief of Police, Pete Nielsen, for this one. Good evening, Chief, and welcome.
Good evening, Commission President Dardis, fellow commissioners. I stand before you today as a request to spend out of the asset forfeiture account. Uh, the West Fargo Police Department is looking to advance our department's fleet with an addition of an all-terrain vehicle. This all-terrain vehicle would allow the department to expand its overall response to certain events that would not be reachable by a squad car. An ATV would also allow us for better access and maneuverability when we're near the riverbed, riverbanks, I should say, or the diversion. This allows us to also get into larger crowds, transport officers, up to six officers, when we are having different events throughout the city, such as cruise night, concerts at the lights, or a parade on Cheyenne Street. This would allow us to bring the officers, like I'm saying, into the area without tying up a bunch of squad cars, and it also gives us the opportunity, like I said, for more maneuverability if we need to get to different areas within the city. The department has identified a Polaris Ranger, four-door crew cab with a bed, and we think that this would accommodate up to six officers once it's fully customizable. The request for the spending would be up to $55,000 out of asset forfeiture. Currently, right now, we have $143,857.69 within that account. That account is there due to the fact that officers have seized money through different arrests on different charges, and that money is, as you know, brought to, to, in order to be spent out of, comes in front of the, the commission. If we do spend up to $55,000, that allows us with still $88,857.69 within that account, and that account grows, as you know, on a daily, monthly, yearly base. The reason for asking for this request is this request was put in previously into our 2026 budget, and I felt like it was more financially responsible to spend out of asset forfeiture for this request versus putting it into our 2026 budget. So ultimately, that was removed out of our 2026 budget, uh, initial budget. The last time that I requested, or the police department has requested this, to spend out of this account was January 29th, 2024, and that's when we spent $50,973.44 to purchase body armor, uh, and plates for the officers that are out on the street. With that, uh, I would hope that we were able to spend out of this account, and at this time, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Commissioner Jorgensen.
So would this be fully equipped? I mean, I don't know what you'd need for tools per se on it?
Yes.
Would that be included in that money?
With that, a request amount would fully equip the ATV. Uh, the ATV would obviously have doors, have a light package on it, have sirens. Uh, we plan on, if it was approved, to use it, like I said, for numerous parades and different activities within the public. Uh, so yes, with that would be everything included.
One more question.
Please commit.
Sorry. Um, would that require any, like, training, how to operate this?
Um, I don't believe so. We would obviously license it as, as it needs to be, to be roadworthy, and we'd make sure that it has the equipment that's needed to have the vehicle on the road, but I don't believe any necessarily training would be utilized.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions for the chief?
Move we approve.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve the asset forfeiture dollars to a ATV vehicle for the police department. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure of fif, up to $55,000 for a police ATV. Is there any this further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
The next order of business is project number twen, nine, item number four, project number 9021, wastewater serviceability and risk reduction study. We're going to call on Dan Hanson, the Senior Director of Community and Development, Development Services. Purpose of this discussion is to award a study to a consultant. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and commissioners. Uh, back in 2022, uh, the commission had approved a study, uh, to apply for a grant that would eventually be used to, to apply for a brick grant, uh, in the end to construct a redundant lift station, uh, in the northern part of our city. Part of that redundant lift station would be to provide backup pumping ability to SA40, which pumps all of our sewage from West Fargo to Fargo. Uh, and also, it would be able to be used to service our future growth area when not being used to supplement SA40 in the event of a catastrophic failure from that lift station. Uh, happy to report that the application for that grant, uh, for this study was approved, and we do have a 75% cost share, excuse me, from the North Dakota Department of Emergency, Emergency Services, uh, to cover this study. So, uh, it, they're going to take a look at a number of different things, analyzing our existing system, uh, taking a look and seeing if there is opportunity to potentially split flows prior to the flows reaching SA40, and potentially if this new lift station is constructed to bypass it, thereby decreasing the volume of sewage that needs to be pumped by SA40 in those circumstances. Uh, and then they're also going to take a look at, uh, you know, future growth areas and what the needs are for that. Uh, this study here is going to be instrumental towards our growth area master plan that, uh, we are currently underway with. Uh, the results of this will be provided over to HKGI, the consultant that is doing that work. Uh, so that way, when they're doing their growth area master planning efforts, they can find out the serviceability of our growth area. Uh, that's going to be tied into all of this work. Uh, there was an RFP process that was used. Uh, we had received proposals from four different consultants to complete the work, and we did have a, a team of people that went through the different proposals, and in the end, we ultimately chose Moore Engineering as the engineering firm to use for this study. So we would look for the commission to award the study to Moore Engineering. Uh, and then there's two phases of the study. The first phase of it is basically just a scoping phase where we meet with the consultant, go through all the tasks that we need to do, and like, and clearly identify the scope of work, and then from there, we would move on with another task order to complete, uh, the services identified in that scope of services. And the last thing that I would add is that we're also looking to engage Apex Engineering as well. Uh, they are the subconsultant that is being used by HKGI for the growth area master plan, uh, because since they're going to be the one, the, the entity that is going to be determining the serviceability of that growth area in that plan, and this work is going to supplement what, the work that they're going to be doing, we want them to be a part of the process so that they're aware, and then that way, they can also be in the room, uh, while we're going through this effort. So that way, when they do get handed the final package, uh, they're very familiar and, and ready to hit the ground running with the work that's being done, and potentially could even use some of this work in their preliminary efforts of, of forming that, uh, growth area master plan. So, so with that, I would entertain any questions, but look for a move to approve.
Questions, commissioners? Commissioners Zundell.
Are we incurring any extra costs by engaging two engineers for this project?
The total amount of the, the grant, uh, is, by the time we get done, it's about $370,000. Uh, of that, we would, uh, get 75% grant money, and then we would have the, the rest of it to, uh, be expended. Uh, once we get into the scoping of this effort here, that's really where we're going to find out. Um, and, and we have a, in our RFP, we listed a lot of different things that we want them to look at, but we also thought, what questions are we not asking? That we should probably get an expert in the room because you don't want to tie a box around something and then later on have them come back and say, well, that wasn't scoped. So, uh, so the first effort, scope it. Second effort is take that scope and form a task order for services, and that task order is going to identify a dollar amount that this effort is going to do, uh, to cost. So in the end, if, let's say that that effort comes to, to be $300,000, we'd still have $70,000 left over that we could spend on, um, if, and we don't have to spend all of it either. I mean, the, the goal isn't to spend everything, it's to get a good product. Um, so potentially, we could, uh, use this grant to also utilize Apex. If we get through the scoping process and we find out it's actually about $400,000 to get through everything, and we have to neck it down to the 370, then this would be an additional expense. And the way that I had, uh, mentioned when I talked to Apex about engaging them in this is I just asked them for an hourly contract to, for services to use as, as needed, uh, not a lump sum or anything where we're committed to it. So, uh, we can, uh, eventually find out what that, what that cost is, uh, that we have extra and, and use them as appropriate.
Thank you.
Long answer to a short question, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hanson, do you recall what we paid Burian and Associates to write the brick grant?
That started right when I first got here, Dustin. Maybe you might remember that. I think I have a number in my head, but I'd rather trust yours, remember?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Commissioner President Dardis. I believe that was around $50,000.
Okay, so the reality then is, uh, 370 plus the 50,000 we've already spent?
Yeah, there is no reimbursement for costs already spent.
Very good. Wanted to clarify that for the public. Commissioners, this is an actionable item.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve project number 9021. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zundell, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve project number 9021 wastewater serviceability and risk reduction study, and award a study to the consultant of Moore Engineering for a total estimated cost of $370,740. 75% or $278,000, $55,000 will be covered with, uh, brick grant funding, and the remaining 25% of $92,685 is proposed to be paid by the City of West Fargo's Capital Improvement Sales Act. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Item number five is a mill and overlay, uh, discussion with regarding the south side of Interstate 94. Again, we call on Dan Hanson, Senior Director of Community Development Services, for information and discussion. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and commissioners. Um, basically bringing back an idea, uh, that was originally discussed in, uh, 2023. Uh, the south side of West Fargo was basically built over, since, uh, the year 2000, and a number of those neighborhoods are, you know, 10, 15, even 20 years old right now, and, uh, there's a lot of trench settlement in the streets. Uh, there's a lot of bumpy rides if you take a, drive through some of those neighborhoods, and, uh, they are in need of a mill and overlay. We originally had brought this forth with about seven, uh, actually, with seven neighborhoods, and we were going to, uh, complete a mill and overlay of those neighborhoods. Ultimately, um, I wanted to just kind of bring up for historical purposes, uh, we, uh, I, I won't go through each one of the neighborhoods, but you can see as I scroll through which neighborhoods and what streets were planned on being milled and overlay with that original project. And so that completes our tour of the south side mill and overlay project. And, uh, so basically, those are the, those are the neighborhoods that we were looking to mill and overlay. That was about an eight and a half million dollar project at the time. And we had sent out a total of 1,355 properties, uh, in the district, uh, that comprised a total area of 362.6 acres. Eventually, at the time that this was published, it was 31 number of parcels in opposition to the creation of the district. By the time we actually had our, uh, our, uh, notice of the, the hearing of protests, uh, that number had risen to 32, uh, people that had written in protest of it. Uh, eventually, the, that totaled about seven acres, so less than 2% of the areas, uh, did protest the creation of the district. So now I want to just kind of take back, uh, these are those neighborhoods again, and you can see, uh, in some of these neighborhoods, for example, this one here, there was one parcel that had protested in that neighborhood, two parcels in this neighborhood. Only one parcel in that neighborhood. And, uh, Westport Beach actually was the majority of the parcels that did protest that project, and then, uh, only one parcel over here in the wilds. So for the most part, most of these neighborhoods that we had included as one improvement district, uh, there was only one parcel that had, uh, looked to protest the creation of the district. Uh, we did have the notice of hearing, and, uh, we did have the hearing of protests, and we did have, uh, several gentlemen speak up, some, several people speak up at that hearing and, uh, voiced their opposition to the project, and at the time, the commission did vote to not proceed. So that resulted in that district being dissolved, and, uh, fast forward to today, uh, public works has been, um, contacted quite often, uh, by residents in these areas, uh, wondering, uh, when the mill and overlay is going to come. We did have a lot of, uh, calls in '24, uh, asking when the, when the mill and overlay was going to happen, to which we replied, it, it did not, uh, proceed. So, uh, right now, it isn't on any planning, uh, document at this point. And so, given the amount of people that have been calling into public works, I believe commissioners have been contacted by people, and engineering has also been, uh, contacted by people. Those are just people complaining about the roads and the ride. Uh, but from an engineering perspective, if we don't proceed with this work, we are lessening the life cycle of these roadways. A typical road, asphalt roadway should last 45 years with, uh, seal coats, mill and overlays, and proper maintenance, uh, fixing potholes and, and crack sealing, those type of things. Uh, without the mill and overlay, uh, the, the street degrades, and you can likely shave off 10 to 15 years of, of longevity of these roadways. So I'm bringing it back more for discussion, that I would like to reengage in the thought process that we would like to do some of these mill and overlays. These would not be mill and overlays done by our public work staff. These would be the traditional, uh, design bid and, um, uh, design bid type of mill and overlays projects. Uh, for the most part, with our public works, uh, staff, uh, they're focused more on the core area where we got, we've got streets that are, uh, very deteriorated, that we're just trying to get as much life cycle out of them as possible. So, uh, their time is better spent up in the core area, and so with these, as, these are more maintenance projects, we would look to do our traditional design bid. The nice part about this is we've already got the design completed for the seven neighborhoods. Uh, I would like to go back and take a look and formulate a plan to come back with not all seven neighborhoods, because that $8.5 million is likely now today, $9 million potentially higher, uh, than that. So, uh, what I would look to do is, uh, maybe bring back two to three neighborhoods at a time each year and just start doing a process where we're, we're going in and, and doing this work, uh, that I, I feel is needed. And over the life cycle cost of that roadway, uh, by the time that you have to reconstruct something 10 to 15 years sooner, the costs that are going to be paid by the city and the residents living in these neighborhoods is quite higher than if we're able to do these maintenance projects with these mill and overlays too. So, uh, so no action that I'm looking forward to, for, from you tonight, uh, but I, I would like just, uh, uh, basically, does, is the commission- is the commission generally favorable towards me bringing these projects back? Because I, I know with the last one having been voted down, I didn't want to bring back something on a concept that we, that the commission does not want to proceed with, but I'd recommend that we do, and I just wanted to get your opinion for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Commissioners, Mr. Hanson's looking for us to authorize staff to look, go back and look at previous improvement district 2261 and 2024 mill and overlay. Your thoughts on it, please?
I think it's needed. I mean, I just, like you said, if we don't do nothing, it deteriorates that much faster. If we put a little bit into it, and the phone calls we've received, the amount, if you break it down per monthly cost, it's very well receptive.
I agree.
Okay. A motion, please? Direct staff?
I'll make the motion to direct staff to revisit this mill and overlay project.
Previously known as 2261 and 2024.
Yep.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Jorgensen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson? You're a busy guy today.
Yep, yep.
Item number six is improvement district number 2265. It's the Ninth Street Northeast, Main Avenue to 12th Avenue Northeast. Again, Mr. Dan Hanson, Senior Director of Community and Development Services, review and approve the purchase agreement with the Runk family. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner Dardis and Commissioners. So we have in process, we're in the design process for the reconstruction of Ninth Street Northeast from Main Avenue to 12th Avenue Northeast, as well as Seventh Avenue from Ninth Street Northeast east into Fargo. And at the intersection of Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street, we are intending to put a roundabout at that location. And also, just north of that, there's a lot of businesses on the east side of the road, one of the major ones being the Hazer property over there, just for reference. And we would need to limit the access to Ninth Street, so there's a plan in place for there to be a frontage road constructed on the east side of Ninth Street that would just be northbound traffic only. And what that would do is it would eliminate all of those accesses to the major arterial roadway. And in, to complete that work, the Runk property, which is located just on the northeast side of that intersection, you can see, they're, they're in the process of plating this property, property, this has come in front of the commission in the past. And to complete the roundabout, we need to purchase property from the Runks that includes this corner of their property here, as well as there's a jut out into, to the east from the right-of-way into the Runk property, and that is where the, the entrance to that frontage road will exist. So typically, if we were just getting easement, like permanent easement for this, it would be part of, it would be part of the process, and it would have just been a project expense. And we've actually acquired a number of easements through the project that we've needed. But this is a different animal because, that I need to bring in front of the commission, because this is actually the purchasing of that property. And the plat has already been going through the approval here. So the way that we would do this purchase would be, we would still create an exhibit, a certificate of survey that shows the property, and we would record that with the county prior to us purchasing, prior to us recording the plat. All of the costs that are going towards the purchase of this project, property is included in the project costs, so they would be included in with the district and not necessarily paid for via 100% capital improvement sales tax. They would be a project expense, and a lot of the project is paid for via grants and things of that nature. For the most part, the, the land acquisition costs are not included in the grant participation, but it still would be part of the assessment improvement district, and so they would be a project cost that would be 30% assessed to the district and 70% is part of our payment towards that project. So, so what I would look for is approval for us to purchase this property, and then we would have it prior to the plat being certified. And Ms. Schmidt, if I misstated anything on the process, please correct me.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Commissioners, questions?
Move we approve.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve, to approve improvement district number 2265. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. I have a motion and a second to approve the improvement district of 2265, Ninth Street Northeast, Main Avenue to 12th Avenue Northeast, for review and approval of a purchase price to the Runk family for the total of $90,835,000. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
We are now on item number seven. Item number seven is the Meadow Ridge Development Reconstruction. Again, we call on Dan Hanson, Senior Director of Community and Development Services. Purpose of the discussion is to create an improvement district number 3008, direct the engineer to prepare an engineer's report, and approve a task order. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. This is a project where we're starting to look into the 2026 construction season. The recently completed core area study identified this project as the second highest priority project in their scoring algorithm, as the sanitary sewer in this location is basically flat. The Public Works Department has to go out and routinely jet the sanitary sewer in this neighborhood. And when I say neighborhood, we're not talking about the entire Meadow Ridge neighborhood. If you take a look, there's this red area, that is the project that was identified in that core area study. For the purposes of the feasibility study that we're looking to do in the engineer's report that I'll come back with, we're also looking to extend that project west, so that way we can take care of the north-south street as well as the east-west street. And then we'll bring that back eventually with an estimated cost and move forward from that. There was, historically speaking, there was a, originally, we wanted to go into that neighborhood and see if we could mill and overlay the entire neighborhood, just to extend the life cycle of those streets. One of the exhibits in the packet tonight, you can see, is we did a ground penetrating radar that basically went, scanned the pavement sections, and we found everywhere that you see in red, there's only two to four inches of asphalt. And so you basically cannot mill that off and put a paver on it without it falling apart. So in general, we found that the neighborhood is not able to be milled and overlaid. There are a couple little sections that have extra asphalt on it. In fact, over here in the purple, I think they found like 22 inches of asphalt in that spot. Generally speaking, I think that's probably because it kept settling and asphalt kept getting added to it. It was not installed at 22 inches originally. But, but for tonight's purposes, we're just focused on the area that rose high in the algorithms as far as the project priority list in the core area study, due to the sanitary and, and utilities in the area. The water main would be replaced, and the sanitary would be replaced, and basically we would be doing a full reconstruct. The streets also in the Meadow Ridge neighborhood are in, in poor shape as well. So we have preemptively applied for some DEQ money for the water main grant that we, same water main grant that we went for with the Westwood neighborhood. We have preliminary applied for that because the deadline to apply for those funds has already come and passed, and we didn't want to miss on it. Doesn't mean that we have to proceed with the project. It just meant if we do move forward with the project, that we'll be able to take and apply, roughly it was about a million dollars, I believe, of, of grant money that we might be able to get for this project towards it. And it's not just the water main, they also say that a third of the street costs would also be included in that, because they recognize you can't replace the water main without tearing up the street. So a portion of this project would be able to be paid for, assuming that those grant dollars do get approved through the state. I don't have any reason to think that they wouldn't, because again, this project is a shoehorn for their program, just like the Westwood neighborhood was as well. So I'm optimistic that we'd be able to get that grant. So for today's purposes, we're just looking to create that improvement district, and then we would direct the engineer to prepare the report. I'll go back, I'll work with the consultant, and be able to come back with the engineer's report and explain more in detail the improvements and the estimated costs from that report. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Quick question for you. When you did the cost analysis of this, it's going to be the standard 70%, 30%?
Correct.
70% capital improvement tax, 30% assessed to the neighborhoods.
That's correct.
Very good. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to create the improvement district and direct the engineer to prepare engineer's report and approve the task order.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, second. Been moved and seconded to approve, create an improvement district number 3008, direct the engineer to prepare engineer's report and approve a task order for the Meadow Ridge Development Reconstruction. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Item number eight is First Avenue East Reconstruction. Cheyenne Street to Fourth Street East, create an improvement district number 3009, direct the engineer to prepare an engineer's report and approve a task order. Again, Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. This is another 2026 construction project that we'd like to get started with the same ask as before, where we'd like to get going with the engineer to, to prepare the report. And just to explain what this project is, is if you take a look, the, we will be reconstructing the roadway and utilities from Fourth Street all the way to Cheyenne, potentially. In the core area report, in the algorithms and in the formulas that were used for prioritization, this project did rise close to the top as well, because on the corner of Fourth Street and First Avenue East is a smaller sanitary sewer lift station that was installed originally with the intent that it was going to be temporary, and eventually it would be able to be connected via gravity west to Second Street. And the, recently, that lift station has been having some problems, and in a recent rain event, it was fairly inundated and had a hard time keeping up. That, that along with the recommendation of the core area studies, algorithms that, that suggested projects, brought this one in front of you today. Again, I just wanted to point out that the original project that is listed on the 2024 CIP for a 2026 constructed project was to reconstruct from Fourth to Second Street, because that's all we would need to construct to connect that sanitary sewer over to the west on that Second Street main. But that being said, First Avenue East, east of this project, was reconstructed fairly recently, and, and for us to reconstruct it only to Second Street, given the shape of the roadway that is, that it's in, it would make sense to me to, at least in the feasibility study and the engineering report phase, to take a look at expanding this project to the west. And we would compartmentalize the engineer's report, so we would come back with a, here's the base project from Fourth to Second, but there's also the add-on of the project buffet that says we can add this block here or this block there. And we would be able to, if we wanted to do the entire thing, we would be able to potentially reconstruct it all the way to Cheyenne Street. One thing that is, there is no sanitary sewer in the street right now. The sanitary sewer is in the alleys in this area, and those have been part of the project that we've been, that we've been working on for the rear yards and the alleyway project. So the area does not need the sanitary sewer, but the lift station needs to be completed. So part of, again, as Commissioner President Dardis mentioned on the previous one, this project would be also 70% city cost, 30% assessed cost, and part of that 70% cost would be the removal of the lift station and the installation of that sanitary sewer that doesn't necessarily benefit the abutting houses, because they're not using that sanitary sewer. Lastly, there is undersized and aged water main that goes throughout. On the east side of First Avenue in the project area, it's actually a four-inch cast iron main is what we show on our records. Then it turns into a six-inch asbestos concrete pipe for the water main to the west of it. So while we're there and we're in the project, the other thing is, is there's that DEQ money, the same thing that I mentioned with the previous project. We've also applied for that grant funding for this project. Again, didn't cost us anything really to apply for that grant, but we did have that deadline come and go, so we did apply for it. And again, we would expect that it would be a good project to fit their, their criteria. So given that, we don't know how long that fund is going to exist and how long that's going to be funded, but right now, the fund does exist and it is able to be allocated to these projects. So right now, if we were to do this work and replace that water main, we would be able to, again, get a third of our street paid for and the water main reimbursed as well to 75%, or no, I'm sorry, a 60% grant on, on that work too. So that's why we wanted to take a look at the project in its entirety, all the way to Cheyenne. But in the meantime, the engineer's report will break it up, so we can make a qualitative decision on what we want the scope to be after that report's been completed. And with that, I would entertain questions.
Questions? Mr. Zundell?
Sorry, you said one part really fast, but it caught my attention. So there's a, a portion that it doesn't serve the residents in this project, and you said that would be covered by the 70%?
Yeah, so the, the, there is no sanitary sewer in this street. All the, all these homes that abut First Avenue, they've got sanitary sewer that goes to their rear yards. So the gravity sanitary sewer that we would be putting in First Avenue to get it from where the lift station exists today to that connection line on Second, that would be part of the 70% that is the city cost, not part of the 30%. It is an overall part of the total cost of the project is where you're looking.
But if it doesn't benefit the residents and we overall do a 70-30 split, why would we not keep that completely separate from the project cap cost, so that the residents are only still paying 30%?
Yep. And, and that's what the engineer's report's going to
Okay.
To talk about, is to go through the scenarios, funding scenarios with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. Over on the west side of this project that goes right by the, right there, the lead-all center.
Yep.
There's a parking lot there. So we're not, are we going to reconstruct the street there, or are we going to leave it as a parking lot?
Not necessarily looking to do that. I, I could see where with the water main, we could potentially like bore a water main through the property or something like that. I don't know if we would actually go through that property and do, and there's no sanitary that needs to go through there or anything. It's basically just getting the water main through there. So there's pipe bursting, or there's boring, or things like that, that we can do, hopefully trenchously, to get through that property without having to disturb their, their property. And then it turns into street section again on the west side of that property. Yep, so, yep, aware of that.
So on the east border, over at Fourth Street East, are any of these, is there going to be any double assessment that hit? Or was that boundary defined before when they did the other First Avenue?
Yeah, correct. So when, when this was, when that sanitary lift station was originally put in, that was a question that I had originally asked when we were, when I was preparing for tonight, was to say, well, do we need to expand this assessment district to the east? Because the sewage that's coming from the east is what's feeding the lift station. And if we're going to just be rerouting sewage coming from the east to that lift station and, and sending it to the west, shouldn't we have them included in the district? Ultimately, I made the, I made the decision, right or wrong, that they, and I don't remember, was it 2017 that that was constructed? They paid to put that in, and now to go back only eight years later and assess them again to remove the lift station when we knew it was temporary at the time did not seem right. So I
I agree with you. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Hanson on item number eight?
I'll make the motion to prepare an engineer's, engineer's report and approve the task order.
Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zundell, second. I have a motion and a second to create an improvement district number 3009, direct an engineer to prepare an engineer's report and approve the task order for the First Avenue East Reconstruction, Cheyenne Street to Fourth Street East. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thank you. Item number nine is the second reading of ordinance 1256 relating to storage locker habitation. We call on Katie Schmidt from the Onset Tuchel as our legal representative.
Thank you.
Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Commissioner, President, Commissioners. As you said, this is the second reading of this ordinance. There have been no changes since the prior draft was presented for the first reading, so I'd ask that you adopt the ordinance tonight. I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioners, any questions? We're looking for a motion to approve this, for the second reading.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1256 relating to storage locker habitation. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 10, we call on our city administrator, Mr. Dustin Scott, for his report. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner, President, Dardis, and commissioners. Tonight, I'd like to start off with an update on our utility billing software transition that has been a very important transformative process, and one that has taken a little longer than, than we had hoped. But I'd like to go over a few bullet points that Rachel helped put together, and stand available for any questions. First and foremost, I do want to thank our finance team and all those that helped out. They've worked tirelessly this past few weeks to get everything running smoothly, get all the billing and, and all that, that fun stuff that goes with converting software, all, all of that in place. And so, a big thank you to our staff for getting that done, and it certainly came with some late nights and some weekends, and so, again, can't, can't thank them enough, and much appreciated. Also, thanking our residents for being patient. Again, this certainly did take longer than we expected, and, you know, really, some lessons learned as we moved to focus on our endeavor to replace our finance software. But, you know, again, we greatly appreciate our residents' patience and understanding as, as we've been working on this over the last few months. In an effort to be fully transparent, we do want to highlight some of the problems that we did have, really boiled down to converting or taking the data from our current software and moving it into, into the new software. There were some challenges with Black Mountain. It took a little time to resolve those things. And again, I chalk it up to lessons learned, and as we look to replace our finance software, we'll hopefully stay ahead of those things. I do want to ensure the public that there are, these delays are not impacting your readings, they're not impacting the accuracy of your billing, and so, really, the delays are just some of the normal conversion stuff that you deal with, with software. So, can't stress that enough, that these delays are not signifying any type of error in our billing system. So, we did receive a lot of questions, so I want to acknowledge this too. This conversion didn't compromise any of your personal data. You know, all of our customer data remains secure, and so, again, just, there is no concerns that you've, that we've lost any type of, of our residential permanent data, or personal data. So, again, those are some of the highlights. You know, the next, or this billing cycle should be coming out either in your emails today, tomorrow, in your mail later this week. So, if you do have questions or concerns with your bills that you receive, by all means, get ahold of our finance department. The information is available on our website. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott?
All right, good. Thank you much. Next, I'd want to highlight our Public Works Expansion Project. It's been a few months since that's been in front of the commission. I do want to give a quick update, that we opened bids on Phase One on Thursday afternoon. I feel like those bids came in fairly successful. It sounds like they were just slightly over the estimate, about 4%, but the Public Works team is, is working diligently with the architect and the contractors that bid on the project to make sure everything is in place. I expect that they will bring it forward to our next commission meeting and recommend awarding a contract. If the commission recalls, this is about a $16 million job. We were able to secure about 95% of that work, secure a low-interest loan through the state SRF programs, as well as the Bank of North Dakota Infrastructure Loan Program. So, Matt will be able to provide a little more information as far as the bids, as well as the project funding. But again, some good news that they, they were able to secure some, some, what appears to be good, good bids. So, any questions on the Public Works Suspension?
Mr. Jorgensen.
Yes, sir.
I'm aware of the whole project, but what is Stage One? Was that the, where the city entity is, or where the sanitation is?
Good question. So, Phase One is, is really the, there's 150-foot square, or 150-foot building, they call it. That one's getting a 1,500-square-foot addition.
Okay.
And then, there's also some structural remodeling of the, the old Camelot building that's up on the north side of the main Public Works Building. So, yep, yep. So, Phase One is really about a little over $2 million project out of the $16 million total project, so.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to budget. Been somewhat of a broken record up here talking about the budget, but this time, I feel like I've got a little more substantiative update for you. So, as you know, we, we were able to conduct review meetings on our, where we sit today with all of the work that our department heads have been doing. Our finance team was able to get everything compiled about a week and a half ago, and so, we spent last week meeting with each of you, Nick, Willie, and I, and, you know, really appreciate all of the productive feedback. I think it's been a very productive way to project ourselves over the next few weeks into a deeper dive as to our, our needs. As a reminder, we are bringing this forward on June 16th. We're still trying to evaluate the level of information that we'll be able to provide and have ready for that meeting, but I do want to acknowledge that last week's meetings were, again, very productive. You know, department heads have brought forward what they feel is the most responsible budget to deliver high-quality services to our residents. But as, as we learned through last week's meetings, now is the time for disciplined prioritization. So, a lot of hard work yet to do in the coming weeks, but we are confident that we'll bring forward a very responsible budget.
Clarify, you said bring forward the budget on June 16th. That will be a preliminary budget?
It'll be, it'll be a high-level review of, of the information that we have available. I don't feel like we'll be ready to share itemized detail for every department, because we're still working on that. And so, to bring forward something that's going to change the next day, I, I want to avoid that, but we do want to share where we are currently at, where we need to focus on as far as the commissioner's goals and priorities for the 2026 year. Things like, you know, reviewing our equipment needs, COLA, you know, some of those, those main factor items that go into the budget, that'll help us really then hone in on the preliminary budget, so that when we get into July, we can share a very detailed preliminary budget. Hopefully, that will not need much change from that point. So, again, yet to be determined exactly the nature of, of information that'll be provided on the 16th, but it will certainly focus on our collective goals and priorities to help us finalize our preliminary budget, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Okay, and then last, I just want to touch on the Growth Area Master Plan. You know, I'm, I'm very proud of our team, Aaron and his team, for, for getting that thing, that, that study. It's a very impactful project and endeavor over the next 12 to 18 months to set the tone for the future. What do we want? Where are we going and how we're going to get there? And I, I'm just so proud that they were able to successfully kick this study off. You know, the, the planning team has been short-staffed for the last several months here, and for them to really roll this thing out and kickstart that into high gear, I'm very proud of that team, and I look forward to the continued progress on the Growth Area Master Plan. So, any, any final questions that I can answer tonight?
Anything for Mr. Scott? All right, good.
Thank you much.
Thank you. All correspondence has been distributed to you, commissioners, in your mailboxes. Is there any non-agenda items any of the commissioners like to bring forward at this time? I got one little thing. It was actually a big deal today. Today, we welcomed to our community the Long Creek Steel, a firm out of South Dakota. The owners were there, the families were there, and, and visiting with the two owners, which are brothers, the Hofer brothers, and Tom, who's the head of, I would imagine he's the CEO of the manufacturing. It was called out on how wonderful all of our departments were to work with, and they particularly focused on Casey Sanders Burglin for your efforts. I think this has been in the works for two, maybe a little longer, two years?
About two years.
Two years. And all of the ownership wanted to share with me how impressed they were with all of our departments in permitting and, and those discussions, but particularly Casey. So, congratulations, that's a great, when, actually, today, they're just doing their groundbreaking, and they're already talking about Phase Two, which is another 100,000-square-foot of their manufacturing facility. So, it's a, it's a great addition to our community. Nice work. Anyone else have anything for non-agenda items? And I, I know that Commissioner Olson was there also, and I know he got the same type of feedback.
Oh, definitely, yeah. And they focused on family. They, they felt West Fargo's going to be their new family. So, it was great to see the number of their family members there, along with their contractor and banker and everybody else. So, I think they're going to hit the ground running. They got the equipment that's supposed to show up by November, so they got a lot to, to do between now and November to button up that, that big plant that they're going to have there. It's world-class, is what we were told.
Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Olson.
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Zundell.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. We stand adjourned. Thank you.